I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Terry is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Pulapati?
Here.
I'm here too.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
And Mayor Sander?
Here.
And, Madam Clerk, if you would announce the meeting video recording and playback schedule, please?
Yes. This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Friday, December 22nd at 6:00 PM and Saturday, December 23rd at 7:00 PM. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Stacy. At this point, I'm going to call on Rancho Cordova born and bred Sheriff Jim Cooper to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and if you remain standing, Deacon Walt Little from St. John Vianney will provide an invocation. Sheriff Cooper?
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With your permission, we do something just slightly different this evening. If you have the prayer in front of you, I would like all of us to recite it as if it is our own prayer. Let us begin. With each deed, with each thought, in a stroke of the brush, my life as a painting began. And the friends that I made added hues to the theme, enriching the colorful plan. And to think that my hand held the master's brush, to make of it what I pleased, be a masterpiece consonant, simple thing, the painting would be up to me. So I pray thee to guide me in these years to come, that my strokes and my tones may increase and my deeds and my thoughts and my friends blend as one in a beautiful masterpiece. Amen.
Amen.
That was beautiful, Walt. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, we have some presentations on the agenda, but as you already know, we have a special guest and I'm going to hone to the old rule of visiting elected officials, get first crack at the microphone. So Sheriff, if you would like to bring us your greetings or words of encouragement or announcements or whatever else you would like to share with us, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It's good to be home, always good to be in Rancho Cordova. I meant to be here a long time ago. I said, I'm going to get to a council meeting before the end of the year. It really took me the last meeting, but I'm here and I'm happy about it. And I just want to come and just talk during public comment and just say thank you. We value the contract with Rancho Cordova. It's been a good contract. It's important when you pay for a service, you get the service you want. That's important to me to maintain the relationship we have with the city of Rancho Cordova and actually build upon it. So that's important. I know you have a brand new chief in Matt Tamayo. He's doing a great job. I'm excited about him. Chief Luke is a grandfather at home, taking care of grandkids and he's in heaven right now. So he's loving life and he misses you though. But that was really it. A lot of things going on, obviously, the big issues in the county and the cities around us are homelessness, retail theft and violent crime. So we're trying to address those issues and just my message for you is just know we stand with you. We've had great conversations with the city manager, Micah, about how we can be better partners. That's important to us and we want to make sure we maintain the contract. So really just thank you for what you do. Thank you for allowing the sheriff's department to serve you and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. So that's all. Thank you. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, wherever you celebrate. Enjoy this time, it's special. And it's not easy being an elected official, especially a city council, because the public, they come and they tell you what they like and don't like and they make no doubt about that. But that was one of the best things Rancho Cordova did was become a city. It's been an amazing ride for you guys. I've got to watch it firsthand and I'm so excited for the city, the citizens in the city. There's been a lot of good things that have happened and there are better things to come. So thank you and I look forward to working with you.
Great. Thank you, Sheriff.
That was it.
And I would add, I think a lot of us are fans of the efforts you've made of late on retail crime and trying to address this, you know, multi-year or now multi-decade-long challenge with homelessness. So we appreciate your leadership on those fronts.
Sure. Thank you.
Mayor, we'll consider that to be public comment and we will continue with public comment after the presentations.
Okay. Micah, I think you might have the first presentation.
Sure. And actually, it's maybe turning into more of a teaser. So we did have an opportunity to present a new company coming to Rancho Cordova, but it's now a teaser for a future meeting that's going to come.
Excellent.
So keep your eyes peeled, stay tuned for future agenda. We'll announce a brand new company coming to Rancho Cordova.
Very, very exciting to be named later. Yes. That's a great announcement. All right. Next up, Michael Rodriguez. Are you in the house, Michael? Oh, yes, he is. Please join me down at the microphones. Wow, look at that. I'm retired. Take that off. Oh, my goodness. Michael. It has been a long time, very good long time. And this is frankly, a day I had hoped would never come. I'm very happy for you, don't get me wrong. I think, you know, this next phase in your life is going to be awesome, but as you'll see, probably poorly captured here because it's impossible to capture the total aspect of what you brought our city, that we're going to miss. But let me try to get through the proclamation and then I'll have something else to say. So this is a proclamation. The city of Rancho Cordova recognizes Michael Rodriguez on the occasion of his supposed retirement. Whereas Michael Rodriguez has served the city of Rancho Cordova as an animal services officer and code enforcement officer for the last 18 years. What employee number are you?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. And in code enforcement, what employee number are you?
No idea.
It's in single digits for sure.
Employee number one.
Maybe, yeah, that is possible. And whereas we're working as a contractor from 2005 to 2007, Michael helped create the city's animal services and code enforcement programs by developing budgets, impacting policy and procedure, and initiating contracts with critical partners in the region, including the Sacramento Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, SPCA. And whereas Michael served as an animal services officer and code enforcement officer from 2007 to 2020 and contributed as part of several focus on 50 Blightbuster Neighborhood beautification programs in support of the Growing Star Neighborhoods Initiative. And whereas most recently, Michael demonstrated his commitment to excellence in code enforcement profession by becoming a certified code enforcement officer through the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. And whereas Michael has shown an unquestionable commitment to the city of Rancho Cordova, his achievements and dedication to the well-being of the city and communities of Rancho Cordova is admirable. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize Michael Rodriguez for his service and dedication to Rancho Cordova and witness thereof, our mayor, Linda Budge, has set her hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed this 18th day of December, 2023. Congratulations. You're very lucky you got Linda to sign this because I'm not sure I would have. Michael, you have been an unmatched force for good in Rancho Cordova in so many ways that we do not have enough paper to print. When we were first starting out on Growing Star Neighborhoods, you served as a lot of inspiration and backbone of that program. When we were taking on some of the toughest challenges that the county left us to deal with here in Rancho Cordova, those were tough, tough days. We had to make a lot of difficult decisions, set some challenging priorities. We made a lot of mistakes. We learned from them. We got better. And every community, every street, every neighborhood in this city benefited from your good work and your steering of us in those early days. So I cannot thank you enough for the contribution you've made to this city. And I'm happy for you being able to retire, but I am really sad to see you go. So.
Thank you.
All right. Would you like to say a few words? We can do that.
I would. Thank you to the board members. I think council has been absolutely supportive of our department and we have some good leadership. But really, Michael doesn't exist without a team. And my team, I would like them to stand up because they do this city absolutely wonderful. And I leave you in good hands because they will do a great job for the city of Rancho Cordova. So you turn the page and move on. Thank you very much. Appreciate this and I appreciate being in Rancho Cordova. Been exciting. Thank you.
All right. Then code enforcement team members, hold up here. He called you out, so now you're in.
Oh, no, we're staying up here?
Yeah.
Linda? You gotta be right here.
Big hurt of us.
Yeah. That's right. Get on in here. It's Rancho though.
Okay. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Yay, Mike!
Micah, do you have anything you want to add to my stunted words?
Sure. So, you know, can't get away from it yet, Mr. Rodriguez, but I think part of this is the uniqueness of Michael and his support of the team of being, I don't know if you catch that, is both animal services and code enforcement and I would say being a Swiss Army knife over the years for neighborhood services and moving back and forth is a unique fit that, you know, not a lot of people can do. And I think that's something that has benefited our team, benefited the city in order to support those kinds of services. And I think just in recognition, I think it talked about it in the proclamation as well, but that contract with SPCA is actually on the agenda tonight to continue that work that Michael started a long time ago in that effort. And so I think the legacy continues. And so I think we really do appreciate you, Michael, and we'll all miss you and your team will miss you as well. So thank you, Mike.
So I have a comment.
Sure. Go ahead, Linda.
So I know all the lost and lonely animals in Rancho Cordova feel the same as the rest of us. I don't know how many times over 20 years I have asked Mike to come and help me find a lost animal and he's come out to the most interesting places like out on Fitzgerald and whatnot. And he's just been really, really great about responding to people, helping them get their animals back home or helping animals get to where they need to go. So, thank you, Mike.
There have got to be a lot of fun stories, I know of ostrich stories, sheep stories, yeah. Ostrich. In the old days. And a garage with, I don't know how many chickens we found in that first Blightbusters. That was remarkable. Yeah, Michael, you've got great stories to tell. All right. Anything else on that item? Very good. We're going to move on to item number 5.3, new employee introductions. Russ, I guess you're up first.
It's kind of full circle up here.
Yeah, it is, huh?
Well, good evening, Mayor Sander and councilmembers. Russ Ducharme, Neighborhood Services Manager, here tonight to introduce our newest customer service representative, Catherine Spur. Catherine's been with us for about two months. She is getting used to all the rigors of Neighborhood Services and doing a great job and we're happy to have her. So I'd like to give her a few moments to introduce herself.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I am Catherine. I am grateful to be working with such a wonderful team at Neighborhood Services and I look forward to growing and giving back to the city. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. And Drew, you are up next.
Good evening, Mayor Sander and councilmembers. My name is Drew Hart, Senior Transportation Planner in the Public Works Department, and it is my great pleasure to introduce Kevin Velazquez tonight. As a testament to the good work that the Public Works Department is doing and particularly in the area of transportation and traffic and mobility in the city, we've been able to do a couple of recent hires, one of which I get to introduce tonight and another one will be at a future council meeting. But tonight, I get to introduce Kevin Velazquez, who joined our team about a month and a half ago and very well qualified and excited to have him as a part of the team. So Kevin, would you introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Kevin Velazquez, I am an Assistant Civil Engineer, working for the Transportation Traffic Team in Public Works. I come from the city of El Grove, working as a contractor, also as an Assistant Traffic Engineer. I am a Sacramento local. I went to American River College. I graduated from Sac State in the spring of 2022 and I look forward to growing as an engineer and contributing to the city of Rancho Cordova.
Very good. Welcome. And Dahlia, I think you've got someone to introduce as well.
Good evening, Mayor Sander and councilmembers. I'm super excited this evening to introduce our newest Assistant Engineer in the Stormwater Team. We have Veronica Seaword Aponte. She just joined the team a couple of weeks ago. She will be helping us with everything stormwater, including keeping up with the storms since we're in the middle of the wet season. So I'll let her now say a few words about herself. Veronica?
Hi, it's lovely to meet you all. I grew up in Vallejo in Fairfield and I've always wanted to give back to my community. I'm passionate about the environment and how it relates to our infrastructure. I've spent the last three years working at an environmental consulting firm in Boston, learning about green stormwater infrastructure practices and contamination in our environment. So only four years ago, my parents moved to Rancho Cordova. I've grown to love the area and call it my second home, but as of three months ago, I've moved here from Boston, so now it's my official home. And so far, I've really enjoyed the parks along the river, the variety of food options and the barrel district out here. In my free time, I like to play pool and I'm really into soccer and I love to watch horror. I'm excited to have the opportunity to impact, excuse me?
Everything's good. You're like, but I love to watch horror.
Yeah. Maybe not the most popular hobby.
You're an engineer for stormwater?
Yes.
I don't watch.
But anyways, I'm excited to have the opportunity to impact the city and work for the people. Thank you.
Very good. Welcome. All right. Very good. Let's see, Mike, have you organized the chainsaw training yet for new employees? It's that time of year, you know, branches come down and all hands out with the chainsaws.
It was maybe part of my city manager's report is the phone number to call to reach us when the chainsaws need to come out, so.
Our former city manager Cyrus was famous for driving down Colomer Road, seeing a tree down, pulling over, getting a chainsaw out of his trunk and cutting it up. So he sort of set an example.
I guess I better put a chainsaw in my trunk.
Yeah, I don't know. It was. Well, Don Nattoli, our former supervisor, used to drive around with a shovel and a bag of asphalt or cold pack so that if there was a pothole, he could just fix it right there. That's what he did when he was a staffer and maybe an early supervisor. Yeah. All right. With that, we're going to move on to more public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. Speaker cards are available in the back of the room and our city clerk is seated right over there. If you want to make a public comment by teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. That's star nine. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by me at that point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community of residence. Note that, under provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So, Madam Clerk, do we have people signed up for public comment?
Yes, I have one speaker card and then a few emails and then I will go to Zoom and telephone. We'll start with Helen Waylon-Bishaw.
Welcome, Helen.
And Helen is following Sheriff Jim Cooper, who just spoke earlier.
Hi, I'm Helen Waylon-Bishaw. I live over in the Tiffany area. I'd like to highlight or talk a little bit about what took place at the last council meeting we had. I want to compliment Siri and Garrett for their input about the trash contract that's up. You were looking at data. Data's real important because data tells a lot. And I'd like to mention to David that you are the National League of Cities person. And one thing I'd like to highlight to you is Rancho Cordova has won the All-American City twice. We're the city of trees. We're the playful city. We also live in the state of California. California is noted for being an environmental city or state. So with that, what I'd like to highlight is there's only one company that brought their environmental engineer to us. One of the major costs for cities in general is the cost of dumping garbage. We currently have a contract with a company that takes our garbage out of the area and deals with it at their own facility. They have an environmental engineer. The environmental engineer is working on recycling all the plastic bottles. Many recyclers do not recycle the plastic because there's so much of it that a lot of it ends up in landfills or down the river and eventually out to sea or along the beaches because the waves have banged it around enough that the particles wind up in the beach and it winds up in the crabs and the other animals that live in the ocean that feed off the bottom. So I think as a city, and David, in your new position, you would represent a city that has a lot of great titles and will be a forerunner in how they handle their garbage because we currently have a contract that is with a company that is progressive and is environmentally sound. And I think that would be a feather in your cap and I think that you would be setting a tone for a lot of other cities to look up towards Rancho Cordova and you yourself because you have been part of the presentations for the Americas City. So I do hope that we look at data and we look at the fact that we have a gem of a company in Republic. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Those are all the speaker cards that I have. I'm looking at Zoom and telephone and I do not see any hands that are raised. Public comment that was received by email was received by the following individuals: Valerie Knippschild, Michael R. Boyd, Marilyn Metzger. Those emailed public comments were distributed to the city council. They have been posted on the city's website and they have been printed for the public who are here in the council chambers and they are in a binder in the back of the council chambers. Thank you.
Very good. Seeing another public comment, we're going to move on to council reports and Garrett, you're up first.
All right. So I'll start with the Sacramento Library Commission. It was our last of the year meeting. Micah, thank you for meeting with my president of that group. They are, it's been two years since we lost the great and powerful RIVCA and it has gone in the right direction. And honestly, I was really scared, but I did pick the guy that looked like my favorite author because he has this giant amazing beard. And so he has gone through and just, you know, like before where you'll get, like every once in a while, you'll get an email from staff being like, I really don't like this and they'll send it to you in email just to all things. We haven't got one in two years. That's literally how well this guy is tapping down and kind of channeling. He really cares about the library. He remembers when he was really, really poor and young, that his first library he was walked into was a Sacramento County Library and he has his original card. I think that's how we all fell in love with him and honestly, he's been the best find. He'll go to anything we want and he helps out in the community and he's fully moved over. He came to us from Chicago and I honestly got to say, he's just a great thing. So, good news. Library is not only on budget, but it also has money in reserves. So that's a good sign. They are now in talks with Micah about Rancho Cordova actually getting its own library, which I am pushing hard for. There's some federal funds, since the state funds are basically gone or disappeared, but there are federal funds that may be available for us. And so as we take these walks of what we're building next, I think it's time that Rancho Cordova actually claims its own library. Number two, the Lincoln Village Christmas Parade was awesome. I got to only be there for a little bit because I have kids and I did hear the horses were crazy, but I still like the giant horses. So hopefully, we can talk Shelly into keeping those even though they are a challenge. I went to the Rancho Cordova Annual Holiday. Thank you for setting that up, Micah and your team. It was fun and it was new and that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Linda?
We have a new school in town, a Pacific Charter School that replaced the Goddard School over on Bear Hollow and they are up and running. Folsom Cordova is their parent organization, however you, whatever is the proper way to express that. And they teach a great variety of classes, including art and music and things like that to the kids. We attended and froze at the St. Jude Groundbreaking a couple of Fridays ago. We were standing on the only hilltop in Rancho Cordova and the wind was blowing at 90 miles an hour down from the north. And I know if anybody saw us on Channel 13, or whatever it was, we must have looked like icicles. It was so cold. We had an ad hoc committee meeting with Golden State Water and I think the most significant thing that came out of that is what I'm going to call the uglification of California, at least Northern California. The fact that public buildings and ultimately all the way down to everything else is not going to be allowed to have grass and there are specific timelines for that. We happen to.
What?
Yeah. We happen to live in the middle of a really handsome business district that has lots of grass berms and all of that stuff has to go on a certain.
Because you got to make sure LA stays alive in the desert?
Probably. I'm sure there's some very good reasons for that, but I don't see the city manager disagreeing. Regional Transit's been discussing a couple of very significant things. One of them has to do with the board composition. Regional Transit's been discussing a couple of very significant things. One of them has to do with the board composition and how to equitably ensure that all the residents in Sacramento County, or at least the service area of Regional Transit, have equal representation. And, and what's the proper way to do that? It's not necessarily population. It is certainly not necessarily the number of bus routes or light rail routes. There's, it's a huge conversation and that's ongoing. And then the other one, of course, is the insistence by the city of Sacramento and S H R A that Regional Transit pay for a new station in what is the rebuilt Dos Rios neighborhood, which is all fine and dandy, but it was not Regional Transit's project and it was not their idea to put the station there. And in order to do that, RT would be using the money that is paying for the low floor cars and new cars. There's no point in putting up a new station if you don't have enough cars to pick up people who might be waiting at the station. And besides, there's a very small number of people who would be, who would be using the light rail at that particular point in time. I sit on a foundation for Metro Fire. And the original reason for this foundation was to fund fire camp. And there, but there, the question is, what do they do besides fire camp? And they are, and it turns out that as the fire districts in California are meeting with each other, there is a list of issues that are coming to the top. Not the least of which, as we see with our veterans, is the health and welfare of the firefighters. How to keep them physically and mentally safe. And so Metro Fire Foundation may get into some topics like that. And then finally, it was my absolute delight to be asked to teach the leadership module again last Thursday. Arts, culture, history, entertainment, sports, whatever we want to talk about. And we had a great time. It was followed by Mica and his government leadership. And I think based on my agenda and his agenda, we probably did a pretty good tag team thing. So had a lot of fun. And anybody who wants to be a part of leadership is absolutely welcome to sign up for next year. This was class 17. It is hard to believe that Diane Rogers and Ted Gabler started this a whole 17 years ago. Kind of like it's hard to believe we got to be 20 years old. But an advantage of this year's class, at least from my perspective, an advantage of this year's class was having a certain number of people who've either grown up here or lived here a long time. There were like four or five people out of the 22 who are longtime Rancho Cordova residents. And that's a real advantage to have that mix of people who can share their experiences of what it was like when they were growing up and having seen Rancho Cordova transition into what it's become today. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Linda. Those two Regional Transit items are, you know, of interest to probably all of us at some level. The governance issue has come up in my experience.
Right.
Periodically.
Got redone when you were on the RT board.
The first time. And then there was a move towards the end of my term to do it again. I think you then picked up on that. There was a, I don't know if there was a second redo. I can't remember. And this is the third time it's sort of being taken up. All of them kind of have the same tenor, I think, interests that are more downtown oriented. Would like to be able to control more of the Sacramento Regional Transit budget. But of course, the major population of the county and the people who are actually contributing dollars to the system do not live exclusively downtown. So there's this built-in tug and pull within the agency. So we even saw that at Secog. We had the SB 125.
Right.
Funding that we had to sort of emergency vote on last week at our meeting.
What did they do?
10 million of it went to that Dos Rios station. That apparently is in trouble in funding. And at risk of losing another grant. And so this was portrayed as being a way to bail them out, in essence.
The grant has been extended for two months.
So, yeah, this is, this is an ongoing thing. I would just encourage you and call on any of us to help, you know, in that political effort. There was a time, I'll just give one example here, when downtown interests thought that we should charge at all the light rail stations in the suburban areas for parking and that that would be a nice revenue source. And so, for example, Mill Station, the proposal was, why don't we charge a couple of dollars a day to park there? And in every case, when you looked at those suburban lots, there were alternatives to parking in the lot. You could just park in the neighborhood. You could park on the street nearby. And so what that would have done is to sort of driven people out of the parking lot into the neighborhoods. More people crossing streets, more people at risk, not much revenue, even if the lot did fill. And we defeated it. But we defeated it only because the new metrics were in place that said $1 equals one vote, in essence. If you were contributing more dollars, you got more votes. And that was a shock. It was the first time ever that sort of the downtown interests lost a vote at RT. And that caused, hey, we got to look at this again question because we may not be in control. But those suburban voices are really important for the success of transit.
Well, absolutely. And, and it is, when you, when you look at the bigger picture, Rancho Cordova's Horn Road Station was a part of the original light rail system that was actually planned, surveyed and had an EIR done back in the 80s. And we've been waiting for a Horn Road Station to serve the library and, and the neighborhoods around there for all that time. And, and so to pop up with a brand new neighborhood where there are only 400 people living who are a few blocks away from the station that, that is the end of the Green Line is completely, from my perspective, is completely illogical.
Yeah, our station is funded, engineered, designed.
Yes, designed. It's got a gorgeous design.
It was only pulled from the build because they had a cost overrun and Rancho Cordova didn't have a city government at the time. So it was easy to yank it away from us. All right. Well, more power to you in those battles. Siri, you are up next.
Thank you, Mayor. So I represented Councilmember Gatewood at the Southeast JPA Connector Meeting. And while I was there, I represented, I nominated him for chair for next year. So he's going to be running the meeting next year.
I thought maybe you'd get yourself elected chair. That would be interesting.
You like how we go, we like snub for each other. We're like, hey, no, no. No, no, he needs to do it.
You're not there, point at you.
We did that to Rich Desmond at the library, right? We drive by, you're charged. He's like, I won't show up. I'm like, all right.
That's funny. So that project that serves as an alternate route for the Sacramento area as a alternate for the current highway system. I think Alt Grove has their funding. Folsom has it. Rancho Cordova is the one piece that needs to get their funding and start the construction. We have received the funding for the design phase. I think they're looking at acquiring the funding for actually building the construction. And of course, I did my Garrett voice and I said, work harder and get it done. Also, I met with, I know at the last meeting, we had the update from the Folsom-Cordova staff about the need for the school in Folsom versus Rancho Cordova. Met with a lot of residents from Rancho Cordova to talk about the need for the high school in Rancho Cordova. The next meeting is in Jan 8th. And I'd highly recommend the residents of Rancho Cordova to be there and voice your opinion about why we need a high school here in Rancho Cordova. We need our voice to be held loud and clear at that meeting. I attended a lot of events that were good for the soul, one of which was the St. Jude Dream Home Giveaway. And yes, it was really cold out there, but it was a good event to be out in the cold. So I really remember that event. The other one was, I was, attended was the ribbon cutting for Vegan Fresh. Being the lonely vegetarian council member, I think I represented all of you really well. They have some really great food. I think you should, you guys should try it out. It's called Vegan Fresh. The other one that I did attend was the Create Mentoring Program Awards at Sacramento State. This was a four-month program for high school students from, that many students from various high schools attended. The kids were mentored by professionals in architecture, engineering and construction to build a structure. And Rancho Cordova High School won the best overall event.
Wonderful.
Yes, among, I think 10 schools, they won the best overall award. So, and they won a lot of scholarship awards and leadership awards as well. So I was really glad to be there to cheer our school on and our city kids on.
In your face, everybody else.
Yes. And last but not least, and I'm still sore from this event. We had the RCPD PAL run on Saturday. I mean, it was a great cause. So I'm really thankful that I ran. The funds that we raised go towards our youth here in Rancho Cordova for the free educational and leadership programs that RCPD runs. And that is my update.
How far did you run, Siri?
5K.
Just once?
Twice would have been the 10K, right?
Right, that's right.
The thing is, did I do it or not? I did it. Don't ask me my time. Just, I did.
That was going to be my next question.
No, I ran.
Wow.
Yeah.
Most in shape council member we have.
She's making us look good. That is a good thing. All right. I have also had a busy few weeks. Thank you for some of my colleagues for appearing at the same events with me, St. Jude and Vegan Fresh. I was actually at Vegan Fresh, but they're early.
I heard.
Yeah, because I, I don't know. I thought it was 2:00 instead of 2:30 or something like that. But it was a, it is a beautiful restaurant, actually.
It is.
In that, in that building right there on the corner. So I wish them well and they have decorated it. It's, it really seems nice, but I didn't get to try anything. So I have to go back.
Yes, it was really good.
Good. I spoke at a conference on the future of democracy in DC a couple of weeks ago. And it was cosponsored by the National Civic League. And the conference was designed to bring a whole bunch of people together who are worried about the future of what democracy looks like in the US. And it wasn't supposed to be about elections, although some of that debate sort of, or voter registration, some of that sort of snuck in to the conference. But what it was really about is what Rancho Cordova has been doing for 15 or 20 years, which is engaging your residents in the business of the city. And so it was cosponsored by the National Civic League, the organization that gives out the All-American City Award, because that award is also given out to recognize cities that have partnered with business and their residents to accomplish things. So it's not an award given for a great city or, you know, great programs. It's given for those partnerships. And so I was able to speak at that. And there were some very interesting examples given there that I, I think I've already shared one with Mica. There are probably more of ways in which people are engaging their residents. But I came back again from it thinking that we have so many examples here that other cities do not seem to be aware of, of how to engage people. I think it's just all too easy for government to do what government does and business to do what business does and residents to think that, you know, government should do it or, or whatever. And those lines are not crossed enough. So it was, it was refreshing in a way, but also I realize there's a challenge there, you know, for the future of democracy and how we engage each other. Secog has been working on a somewhat heated issue, at least internally, of tolling. And if we do tolling in a future project, the first of which would be a widening of the Causeway between West Sacramento and Davis. Who would be on the tolling authority? Who would have the power to appoint people to the tolling authority? Would it be an independent JPA? Would Secog run it? Would a county run it? Would S R A run it? There's all sorts of options there. So it is undetermined at this point. We had a lot of divergent opinions in the room. There are some agencies, the city and the county of Sacramento, who seem to really want to control or at least have a very heavy presence on that tolling authority. I think they're considering that there's going to be a lot of excess revenue, but I'm not sure there's any tolling authority that has a lot of excess revenue in the state because there are state mandates about how you have to spend those revenues mainly for maintaining the facility, running the authority and then doing offsets for the number of miles traveled on your facility. So.
So it's all Yolo County?
The first one is all Yolo County.
I mean, the Causeway is all in Yolo County.
100%.
Yeah, West Sacta-Davis.
And it's a Caltrans, 100% Caltrans-owned facility, an operated facility. So the original proposal for what the tolling authority would look like was two appointees from Yolo County, probably made by the county. Two appointees or one appointee from Caltrans, that's debatable. And then Secog appointing additional people, I think three, two of whom must be from Yolo. So it would really be a Yolo run board with one odd Secog person and one odd Caltrans person added to it. And then if tolling expanded beyond that point, say into Sacramento County, you would repeat that exercise. And you would probably have Sacramento County gaining two seats and they'd enlarge the tolling authority board. And they would have the ability to point people to it. If it went through the city of Sacramento, maybe the city of Sacramento gets to point someone and so on and so forth.
There's so much of that that goes on back east. Are they looking at, looking to those for models?
There were not many models presented to us. It was just sort of thrown out as, this is how you can set up a JPA.
All of us, you know, who've flown into Dulles, there's, there's so many tolling lanes that come and go between Dulles and DC.
Yeah, that's interesting. So that's one of the things that'll happen in the next couple of months. We'll have some models presented back to us and some additional data on how these things operate under California law. The St. Jude Groundbreaking was fun, but cold. And we did the PAL. So what's the event called? Christmas in Cordova? Holiday Star Program. There we go. Holiday Star Program. Just last week. That is, I don't know how many of my colleagues, you've probably all been to that, right? Holiday Star Program, where they pick a couple of kids from every elementary school in Rancho Cordova and give them basically a shopping spree. This year it was done at Target. It was actually a beautiful day. There was, there were no weather issues out there. Some people were bundled up with memories of freezing and past events. I think Mica fit into that category. He was a little bundled, just in case. But it was a beautiful event and you get to see all the little kids come up, some really shy, some really excited. You see all the, you get to see all the principals in Rancho Cordova come up and talk about their kids. And then they go off to shop with a, with a cop or other volunteers. So it was, it was a great event. And our PAL organization should be complimented on setting that up. All right. With that, I think we're going to go on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'll have a few just follow-up things on some of the different. It's been a busy couple of weeks, it sounds like, in different events and different opportunities. I did have the pleasure of speaking at the Leadership Rancho Cordova Program and talking about governance and some of the different activities. And part of that is, as the mayor mentioned, is our partnerships and unique partnerships and what makes Rancho Cordova unique. And I think continuing to talk about that within our leadership programs to not just share nationally, but even remember locally with our different partners and their different leaders, future leaders in the community. I just want to thank Kim Duran and Megan Siren for helping put that together and helping present that on Thursday. Next is the removal of the turf. And so as Councilmember Budge mentioned, that is an upcoming state mandate that's coming towards us in the future. It actually will probably come up in our legislative report in January that we'll talk about. But it's, I wouldn't say necessarily all good things, but sometimes state mandates come with different unknown implications that we'll have to manage moving forward.
So what would they, what would they put instead of grass? Are we just going to have a bunch of rocks?
Bark and rocks.
Drought resistant.
Okay, so Mica, okay, Mica, but here's an idea. Basically, our lawns serve as a park for the children's museum. So we need to declare ourselves a park because you're sure not going to do picnics on bark and rocks.
We'll have creative solutions in the future when that mandate, it's a few years away as far as those implications, but that is something that will come to the government first and then actually to commercial properties second. So it is not just us, it is all commercial properties have to remove turf in California.
Really?
Really.
Or they want it to be hot? Like, they know it cools all of California. We have really hot weather. Our coolness comes from having our green. That's.
So more to come.
Yeah.
But I, I do appreciate.
Ugly looking, too. Ugly looking. Like grass and bark, the rock, whatever.
Probably artificial grass.
Oh, yeah, that's what we should have. Nice, nice fake grass.
Saves water.
Okay, so when you figure out how to vacuum it, let me know. Mine, mine is all bird seed.
A bunch of plastic that gives off various chemicals as it ages in the sun.
That's good.
I guess this is the good news portion of the night, is the other state mandates that come that we have to figure out, how to figure out. I do appreciate Councilmember Gatewood mentioning the library. That was something that the council asked us to continue to, to look into and report back on. So that meeting with the library coming up is moving that direction and trying to figure out what does that look like for us and moving a library forward in Rancho Cordova and figuring out the right options there. So that's coming soon.
Just FYI, we'll be naming at the Linda Budge Library. Just, let's get prepared. That is happening, Linda. Just be prepared when it. Just be prepared when it happens and let it happen.
I did, I did appreciate the chainsaw, uh, you know, comments. And uh apparently we'll all be carrying chainsaws cuz there is a storm event and the storm season is upon us. And so uh just to remind everybody that if there are down trees or different things, that there is a phone number that you can call in our community, so nine one six eight five one eight seven one zero. Um, to remember to give us a call. And hopefully we have uh team members who are ready and available to uh take those trees down and uh I don't have to carry that chainsaw in my trunk for very, very long. Um, then next is uh wanting an update on the Holiday PAL run and actually the Christmas in Cordova event. The chief was nice enough to send me some numbers today of, of the activities. And so a good PAL holiday run. I did not do the five K uh that Vice Mayor Pula Patti was able to do. I did a one point two mile family walk. So I know my last name is Runner, but Walker was more appropriate for me that day. But there were six hundred and forty-three registered participants in that event. So it's the most they've ever had uh as far as a record for the Holiday PAL uh event. And then that really was in support of the Christmas in Cordova event where they've uh given out uh toys and, and things to uh residents and, and children. Over six hundred kids got um Christmas presents, basically, for uh, for participating in the Christmas in Cordova event. So I wanna thank the PAL team for putting those together and really celebrating the holiday spirit with the Holiday Star event, the Christmas in Cordova, the uh, all of the fun activities that, that we were able to do. Uh, and I think with that, the only other announcement I have is a reminder that City Hall is closed uh the week between uh Christmas and New Year. So uh as we uh give the opportunity for most of our city team, they're, we're not always closed, so our twenty-four hour operation. So some folks will be um working, but for the most part, we are closed and um give our uh team members the ability to recharge and regroup and be ready for the uh, uh, celebrate the new year. So uh just a reminder for everybody, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Mayor Sander, there are some hands that are raised in Zoom during the reports. So they are permitted to speak um under public comment for items that are on the agenda.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go ahead and allow the first caller, Sarah, to speak. Sarah, are you there? Sarah, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself? Sarah? Okay, we'll go to the next hand that is raised. And that is a telephone caller with area code four zero eight. Can you unmute yourself and would you like to speak under public comment?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
The host, the host, the host. Can you hear me now? I'm so sorry. Okay, thank you. So um my um reason for calling in was I um have been a uh, uh, um, I've lived in Rancho Cordova for over fifteen years and I've seen the city grow. I really uh think all of you guys have done an excellent, fantastic job uh building the city. But my reason today was uh being um part of the healthcare system. I um work closely with UC Davis and the Davis City and I saw that they recently passed a resolution for a ceasefire um with the Gaza um situation. I was wondering if we've done the same thing here in Rancho Cordova, was my question. No? Okay, so I.
Yeah.
My concern as a, as um being in healthcare, I don't know too much about politics, but I just know about healthcare. And I see that the, um, with the US funding this, this war, um, I do support that we should do everything we can to um s-stop the violence and ceasefire because uh many innocent people are dying. There's no healthcare, there's no food, there's no shelter, there's no electricity. So I was just wanted to bring this to your attention. If, if we can join our um neighboring city as similar to Davis and the other cities that I'm aware of that have had, have brought this to the attention of our congressman. So that's my um, what I would like to bring to your attention. And I would be happy to help with writing a resolution. I, this is new for me cuz like I said, I'm in healthcare, but I just wanted to bring this to our um city.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Mr. Merchell, like, comment briefly?
If, if you'd like.
No. No, next.
Well, I'll comment. Um, Sarah, traditionally, this council doesn't take up um foreign policy matters. Um, a lot of cities are in that position of feeling like we are not, uh, we're not the best suited venue for those sorts of debates. People can have many opinions about them and we have no expertise or decision-making authority or necessarily any real influence. But individuals who live within our cities certainly do and we, as elected officials, certainly do. And many of us, I think, do take advantage of that position to comment to the people who do have some influence over foreign um affairs and foreign relations issues. So I would encourage you um and anyone who feels like you to do the, to do that and contact our congressman, contact our senators. You can write to the president, so the Department of State, and ask that they weigh in on that. But often for cities, it can be um almost counterproductive to our overall mission to take up issues about which we, in the end, don't have any official influence or expertise. So that has been our position, most California cities do that as well. There are some exceptions. In our region, I'd say there are probably two cities that undertake those and probably uh twenty that do not.
Mayor Sander, there's no additional um commenters via Zoom or telephone.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, um, we're gonna move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to pull from the consent calendar? And those are items nine point one through nine point eleven.
If there's no public comment and hearing, no items to be pulled.
Is there any public comment?
Good question. So I do not have any speaker cards for items on the consent calendar. I'm also looking at Zoom and telephone and there are no hands that are raised.
And I would move approval of the consent calendar, items nine point one through nine point eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. And clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaywood.
Yep.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Pula Patti.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is consent public hearing items. There are none. Then public hearing items, there are none. And then item number twelve, regular calendar items. If the clerk would read item twelve point one.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the city of Rancho Cordova, Grant Line two twenty, Community Facilities District number two zero two three dash one, Improvement Area number one, approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving state of such bonds and approving other related documents and actions.
Michelle, I think you have a report for us.
I do, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Michelle Mingay, Finance Manager. The item before you this evening is a resolution um authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds on behalf of Community Facilities District two thousand twenty-three dash one for the Grant Line two twenty project. The CFD was recently formed in August and the purpose of the, the, the purpose of the district is to um finance certain impact and uh impact fees and facilities for the Grant Line two twenty project. Um, the financing related to these bonds this evening um is to approve the special tax bonds in an amount not to exceed eight point nine million dollars. And similar to previous CFDs, the intent of the bond funds is to fund impact fees and infrastructure um for that development project. The special tax bonds um that will be issued are um secured solely by special taxes collected within that CFD boundaries and are not debt of the city's general fund. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that the council may have this evening.
So Michelle, in a nutshell, these funds will be used for?
It's going to be used for um either the payment of infrastructure um fees, impact fees related to um infrastructure in the Grant Line two twenty project or the reimbursement to the developer for um infrastructure that they construct and donate or dedicate to the city.
So this is a normal way of financing development?
Absolutely, and it's infrastructure only. So those items related to um the infrastructure that the city does um ultimately own.
All right, very good. Any other questions of staff? Is there any public comment?
I have just, sorry, a, a correction. The not to exceed amount was actually eleven million, not the eight point nine that I originally said.
Ah, okay, very good. Any questions for staff? Any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment uh via email or by speaker card. I'm looking at Zoom and telephone and there are no hands that are raised.
Counsel, any comments or questions?
Seeing none, I will move approval of the resolution to authorize the existence of special tax bonds on behalf of Grant Line two twenty, CFD number two thousand twenty-three dash one, et cetera.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Budge, second by Pula Patti. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gaywood?
Yep.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Pula Patti?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Aye. Very good. That was item twelve point one. We're gonna move on to twelve point two. This is an exciting project. If the clerk could read the uh subject, please.
Chase Drive, American River Parkway Connection Project Update.
Welcome, Albert. I think this one's yours.
Good evening, Mayor Sander and Councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And the city of Rancho Cordova has twenty-six miles of beautiful trails, including six and a half miles of, in my opinion, the most beautiful frontage on the American River. And those trails serve to connect Rancho Cordova and also to highlight some of the really incredible regional gems that happen to be here within the city of Rancho Cordova. And Edgar and Christine are going to be giving us more information on a recent project that is in design, that is another grant award-winning project. And I'll hand it over to you, Edgar.
Thank you, Albert. Mayor, Councilmembers, Edgar Medina, Public Works Department. Happy to be back in front of you, presenting on a great project, the Chase Drive American River Parkway Connection. Tonight's goals for the project presentation is really to give you a li- a little bit more project background, project overview, the community engagement that we've, we've engaged with the, with the, with the residents, and project timeline and really the next steps. So as, as Albert mentioned, the Chase Drive American Parkway project is such a key project within the bike master plan. It really highlights a lot of improvements that are currently underway and or have already been included, uh, constructed within the city. It really makes a key connection within the American River Parkway. Uh, on the screen right now, you see that it's, it's adjacent to, within Chase Drive, adjacent to the high school and really establishes a, a real connection between Coloma and the American River Parkway connection. Um, it is integral to that twenty-six mile uh network that, that Albert mentioned and really is a, is gonna be an enhancement to the city uh's network. A limited background on the, on this, on the project in of itself. In two thousand fifteen, the city of Rancho Cordova began um working with stakeholders to start developing a master plan. Those stakeholders included Sacramento, uh, Cordova Recreation Park District, Cordova Community Council, Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, Soulburn Farms, and then Sacramento County Regional Parks. On the, on the screen right now, you see that the limits of our project extends from Coloma in the south and connects to the American River Parkway on the north, uh, on the north end, next to the trailhead. The master plan that identified a lot of key things, but most of the things that really uh were identified as far as uh enhancing the local and active transportation, the connections to the American River Parkway, increased bicycle and safety community, improved access to the Hagan Park, Soulburn Farms, Cordova High School. And ultimately, in two thousand sixteen, the, the Chase, the Chase Drive Corridor Master Plan was approved uh by council. And then soon after that, the city began uh design on the first phase, which is the Chase Drive-Coloma Plaza project, which is right at the intersection of Chase and Coloma, which is on the, on the right side of the, the, the slide. And in two thousand twenty, uh, February two thousand twenty, the, the project was completed and subsequently was identified as a project of the year within the American Public Works Associates, Association Sacramento Chapter. Uh, more recently, the city worked with, with Soulburn Farms and completed the next phase of, of this corridor project, which is the Soulburn Farms parking lot, which is a huge uh enhancement for not only the, the Chase Drive, but also Soulburn Farms. The, it came out, just being personally involved in that project, the, the parking lot and the driveway improvements and their signage and it came out such, it came out really, really nice. So with that, I'm gonna pass on the, the presentation to our senior project manager, Christine Cordy.
Thanks, Edgar. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers of the public. Christine Cordy, Project Manager. We are excited to talk about this important connection for the community. This is a dedicated bicycle and pedestrian facility that will go from Coloma Road to the American River and will enhance bike safety along this corridor. The city was successful in receiving two point four million dollar SACOG Community Design Grant to fund this third of a mile important connection for the community. So we've kind of broken this um trail out into three segments with some distinct characteristics, which I'll be going over next. The first segment is adjacent to Mills Middle School and this will include a ten-foot wide multi-use path with pedestrian-scale lighting, which will help increase safety for all of the people accessing the schools and the recreational amenities. Uh, we will be removing the existing chain link fence and putting in a six-foot tall decorative fence. And the majority of the trees along this area will be preserved. However, there are a few unhealthy trees that will be removed for the pathway alignment. With this segment, the city did coordinate with Cordova Community Council on the Fourth of July Parade Route, making sure that this worked with that. An important event to the community, as well as uh coordinating with Folsom-Cordova Unified School District to ensure adequate room for spectators using the track and that field. Segment two is adjacent to Cordova High and some of the CRPD recreational communities and the Hagan Community Center. Uh, this is a continuation of the ten-foot wide um path. Existing, there's these two meandering sidewalks and the goal will be to replace one of those with the ten foot, ten-foot multi-use path and keep, maintain the existing sidewalk where feasible. The last segment is in um the county, uh, county parks, Hagan Park area. This will include a twelve-foot wide path. Um, that's meets Sacramento County standard for the American River Bike Trail. During the arborist inspection, it was determined that a lot of the liquid ambers were in decline due to the, the topping underneath the smud lines. Therefore, it was recommended to remove these trees and relocate them and using more appropriate native species that will be able to grow healthier in the future. And we did also Cordova, uh, coordinate with Cordova Community Council in this area as they do do their parking for, and ensure that this doesn't affect the parking layout for the Fourth of July event. As part of our community engagement, uh, we did host an online survey in the winter of two thousand twenty-two. We received over fifty responses and this confirmed that there are many recreational, educational and community amenities that people enjoyed. And the survey also confirmed the need for additional bike and pedestrian safety in this area. So this just shows a quick visual of the survey respondent showing that there are a lot of people biking um in this vicinity with popular destinations. So this path will increase the safety for them, as well as all the pedestrians using the area as well. So a little bit about the project timeline. It was um. It was, as Edgar mentioned, the master plan kind of kicked off the overall design, and then the city was successful in receiving two point four million dollars in grant funding in May two thousand twenty-one. The design was initiated with a consultant later that year, and over the course of two thousand twenty-two, we did extensive stakeholder outreach with Soilborne Farms, Folsom Cordova Unified School District, CRPD, County Parks, Cordova Community Council, as this trail really does work with a lot of those different partners. We also received community feedback through our online survey in the winter, and we hosted a community meeting at the middle school in April of two thousand twenty-three. So where we are in the process right now, we are working on environmental permitting and finalizing our design. The anticipation, future steps are completing our plans in the spring of two thousand twenty-four, with construction beginning in the summer of two thousand twenty-four. So with that, we're excited to hear your feedback tonight about this project, and with our next steps being finalizing our construction documents for a summer two thousand twenty-four construction. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions for staff? I was listening to a podcast on a flight over the weekend, and they were talking about the value, and this is from, oh, gosh, what's the guy's, the mayor of, oh, city just outside of Indianapolis, Mayor Brainard?
Carmel.
Carmel, Indiana.
Carmel.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor Brainard, I think his name is. I think they have done more roundabouts than any other jurisdiction in North America. And he was talking about the very low maintenance of a roundabout compared to the maintenance of a signalized intersection. It reminded me of our discussion about Chase Drive and Coloma Road, and what it would take to actually put a roundabout in that location. I do remember that we actually looked at it. Do you guys remember that? That would be one end of this facility.
We did look at that, and there are many challenges and some opportunities associated with that intersection. And actually, staff will be bringing back a report based on a citywide roundabout study that was done in the next few months.
Okay. Because that would obviously impact one end of this trail. And one of the comments on the podcast was, getting pedestrians and bikes through a roundabout is a little more challenging for the public who hasn't experienced it than just driving through one, which can also be challenging when you're not used to it. But apparently, people get used to them very quickly, once they're in place. My question regards the football field at Mills. So how close does this facility, as we've designed it, get to that actual field?
I'm gonna go back a few slides, so we can kind of...
It's kind of in the field.
We thought, you know, originally, just like, you know, visualizing this in my head, I thought, oh, there's a ton of room there. You know, putting this ten-foot trail through, that's not gonna be a problem. And then when I actually went and walked it, I realized, we're getting close. It's much closer than I'd realized.
So here, you can kind of see how the path is going to meander, and we did work with Folsom Cordova to make sure there was room for bleachers for the events kind of in that middle section of the field. So that was part of the reason why you kind of see, originally, we weren't gonna add that kind of meandering feature. I don't know if the laser pointer works, but...
Okay, so this, I saw this in the presentation.
Is it working now?
Before the meeting. So this is an accurate representation?
Yeah. And we did meet with, like I said, the Folsom Cordova staff, and we laid it out with the bleachers and a couple of different items to show them what that would look like.
So in some places there, we may well be twenty feet off of the track?
We can get you the exact measurement, but yeah.
I think eventually, this track has to be slightly adjusted or relocated, and I think as, actually, I think Garrett, you brought this up before, that we ought to upgrade that, and perhaps make that the home for junior lancers. So I just want to be sure that, you know, this project has been properly vetted, so that that sort of addition modification is not gonna run into us having to tear this trail out in order to make it work. Linda, do you have any questions about that?
Just personally, I'm not much of a fan of meandering sidewalks. If you look, if you drive Laguna Boulevard, and Elk Grove was built to county standards with all those meandering sidewalks. And granted, Laguna is extremely hostile environment. It's huge, and it's lined with at least six, if not eight-foot sound walls walling off the neighborhoods on either side. And you never see anybody on those sidewalks. And it just strikes me that people like to walk in a straight line from point A to point B, and when you put in meandering sidewalks, and you're going up and down, and up and down, and up and down, it's like, why bother? You know? It just seems to me, especially with school kids, getting them on the sidewalk to begin with is an issue. And making the sidewalk straight just seems a lot more logical than meandering the sidewalk.
Let me see if I could go back here. So one of the things, a great point, and I would agree one hundred percent that people tend to walk in a straight line from point A to point B. So one of the things in this exhibit, especially along the Mills Middle School frontage, we are maintaining the existing sidewalk along Chase Drive. So one of the things that we're trying to do is kind of provide another safer option for the bicyclists and other people that want to walk on the trail. So along the middle school, they will still have the option to go along the sidewalk.
So you're gonna have parallel, sort of parallel sidewalks?
Correct. Just along this particular section.
From Coloma to...
To the first driveway.
What I think is, it's probably labeled Lancer Drive, whatever that is. It's the road that goes behind the school, between the two schools.
Correct, that's correct.
Lancer Drive, yeah.
Unless Lancer Drive is the one between the school and the park.
Oh, sorry, it's that one.
Is that what it is? Okay, so it's the first one, where you turn in to what's...
Counseling office parking lot.
Yeah, it's now the counseling office. It used to be attendance and visitors, and now it's counseling. Interesting. So theoretically, meandering for bicycles and straight for pedestrians?
The option would be certainly for both bicycles and pedestrians to be on the trail, on the multi-use trail. We do have parallel trails along the entire way, along to Lancer Lane that you mentioned. North, as you get to CRPD property frontage, it actually becomes one trail along that, and then it crosses over Chase Drive along Hagan Park, which is just one trail. There are components of here where we have two parallel alignments.
So when you get a site plan, could you send that around?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be helpful, because I'm not quite capturing it. So a site plan would be helpful.
If I may add as well, there was certainly, Councilmember Budge, I'm sure you've seen that in the early and mid-two thousands, it was certainly in vogue to have these quite exaggerated meandering sidewalks, like you mentioned, including the up and down and the...
Look at sunrise. And not only is it up and down, but it's on a hill up and down.
That's a really good example, and we found also that, just as you very accurately pointed out, that is not how people like to walk, and it does not encourage walking. This has returns that connect to the roadway at specific points, but we'll definitely, as we move forward with the design, look for, I believe in the existing design, and we'll really appreciate your input and can ensure that as the design progresses, that in between those points where it connects to the roadway, it maintains as straight an alignment as possible while maintaining all of the aesthetics as well.
Superb. Thank you.
And we can certainly bring back the design as it progresses for you to see.
That would be great. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment?
There are no public comment cards, and there's no hands that are raised in Zoom, and we do not have any emails for this item.
We have collected a lot of public comment in other venues, so I was actually expecting we might have some here, but... All right, counsel, comments or questions?
Is it just receive and file?
Yeah, I think this is a really exciting project. I'm happy to see it come along. We really need to get access to the American River Parkway for our residents and make that as easy as possible wherever we can, and this is an enormous opportunity to do that.
Besides, this was our only requested project that was actually approved by the committee that didn't like Rancho Cordova projects.
Yeah.
Two thousand three or four, whatever that was.
We have had challenges getting this funded, yeah. But, I mean, if you think about where we go from here, actually, on that other end, when it gets to Coloma Road, how do we improve access to the end of Chase? That's our next challenge. And what other, you know, tendrils can we put through our community to get those bike access points in? It's gotta be a continual effort. All right. If there's no further comment, we can move on to item twelve point three. If the clerk could read the roll, or read the item, please.
Discussion and potential direction of planning commissioner appointments and qualifications.
All right, very good. Darcy, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor Sander, members of the council. Darcy Galar, the planning manager. So this evening, we will have a discussion on the planning commission in terms of qualifications and the two applications that we received for the vacant positions. So tonight, the council will receive a report on planning commission qualifications, and then take a look at the two applications that were received to fill the vacant at-large member seat. Staff is looking for council to provide direction on any potential code amendments that you may wish for us to bring back for required or desired qualifications, and then how you would like to proceed with those two applications to fill the vacant position. The municipal code, section two point three zero four zero, lists all of the qualifications that are currently in the code for planning commissioners, and there's three. They must be eighteen years of age, they must reside within the incorporated city boundaries, and they cannot be elected or appointed as an official of any other public entity whose jurisdiction would include any part of the city. So some potential required or desired qualifications could potentially be professional experience and a field closely related to development. So the screen lists just a variety of different potential qualifications that someone could have. Staff would suggest that of the seven-member planning commission that we have, that maybe council look at these qualifications for desired or required for just the at-large members. It's anticipated that maybe with your redistricting, those positions in terms of the ones that you nominate and vote on could potentially go to districting, so it may be difficult to have all seven members have some sort of required or desired professional experience if that's where you land. So you may want to focus any qualifications that are additional to what's already listed in the code to your at-large members. Additionally, with the vacant seat, there was an application that went out. Two applications were received in that three-week period. Currently, we do have one vacancy. The at-large members have a four-year term. So unlike the five that are nominated and voted on, which follow your council member term, your at-large members are a four-year term from the time that they are appointed. So in closing, staff is looking for council to provide any direction on future required or desired qualifications, and then how you would like to proceed with filling those two, the vacant, the one at-large vacant seat. So you could direct staff to come back for a future agenda item and appoint one of the two that you've already received. Or you could go a different direction. If you would like some code amendments for required or desired qualifications and would like staff to reopen that application period, that could be the direction as well. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Very good. Linda?
When we did the original appointments, didn't we invite everybody to come and speak to the city council?
We did when it was time to make those nominations. So if that is the desire of the council for a future meeting, we would definitely do the same thing with this role.
That seems only fair.
Yeah, I think so.
I am so impressed with the two people who applied. My goodness. I mean, both would be huge assets, so it just seems like it's only fair, and especially because we're minus a person.
My understanding, Linda, is this is not selecting the candidate, it is how we want to proceed with this at-large position with the qualifications. So I don't think we're selecting the candidate today.
Oh, no. No, but that's what I said. We should invite them to come back and speak to the city council the way we did with everybody else who originally applied.
Yeah, it's sort of my feeling that I think the outreach and the appeal for applications kind of got ahead of some of the comments we had made as a council, where we said for these at-large positions, we might want to look at some additional qualifications, and maybe not even making them mandatory, but making them something we would like to see, someone with some experience in building, contracting, planning, engineering, something. Something relevant to sort of the work.
But how does that apply to the two candidates that have applied if we want to revise the qualifications?
I would think we would just leave them in the pool and do a second ask for applications, and if necessary, update our ordinance to say we're interested in having at least two of the at-large, or the two at-large people have some additional qualification.
Darcy, can I ask you to put out that slide of your recommendations? And I agree with Mayor Sander in terms of the two at-large positions might be the ones that we need with the professional qualifications, and I'd like to ask you, Darcy, how was your experience, given that we've had a really good pool of candidates and we have a planning commission? And I see your recommendation as well is to fill those at-large positions with people with professional qualifications?
Staff actually doesn't have a recommendation on that. The recommendation would be is if the council does wish to have recommended or desired qualifications, that that be tied to at-large membership. So currently, we do have a vacancy, and that leaves us with six. The planning commissioners in the last year have done a great job with the training and the different conferences we sent them to, so they're doing a great job with that. But if you do desire to have qualifications, we would want you to tie it to whether it's you delay filling this spot and then have us re-recruit, or fill it with one of the two that we have, and then all future would have some sort of a qualification.
Both are perfectly valid.
I would think delay, clarify what we're looking for. I haven't looked closely at these two, but I suspect they might qualify under the sort of terms we're thinking about. Is that true, Linda? Have you looked at their?
I don't think so.
No, these are fabulous people, by the way. These two Rancho Cordovans would make amazing council members in the future, but as for planning commission, I thought we were gonna try to get people with planning experience so that the five, whoever we choose are our choices as council members, but the at-large should really be the ones to kind of lift everybody up and kind of be like, this is what it means to be a planner, instead of just throwing them and being like, hey, I know you have no experience. You know, you want someone that can, you know, sit with the other council or planning commissioners and be like, yeah, we don't do that. That's not our job. This is how you do this.
Okay, but if you look at the list, it's not just planning. They could be skilled in architecture, they could be a contractor. We had, originally, we had one gentleman who was a construction manager, and he was invaluable.
Right.
But, yeah, no, I agree. Both of these people are, one of them is a very longtime Rancho resident, and one of them has been here for a while, and they both, from my perspective, are very well-qualified. So if we open it back up and ask for somebody within these five skill sets, then we would definitely want to keep those two people in the pool.
This is not my area of expertise, and I definitely am really happy with the planning commission and the need for a planning commission. That said, Mayor, I think we should have, I think this came before our comments, and this was kind of a step that kind of went fast, but we did open it up with a certain set of qualifications, and we did receive some really good candidates. Maybe we put that precedence that moving forward, if anybody changes, and the at-large positions would require these qualifications, rather than open it up, and then we already have two great candidates.
Yeah, it just feels like we're out of order with this. I was surprised that we had opened it, frankly, given what the councilant said previously. So it felt like we were... So it felt like we were just a step out of step with ourselves.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think we, those, the request to come back came after we released the, the opening when we had the vacancy. And so I think what we're trying to do now is kind of figure out the right path to honor the process that took place, but also meet the desires of having qualifications or having a preferred qualifications as, as was suggested that we talked about. And so I think we kind of have two different options. One is we could change. And I think it does require, we'd like it to be in the code. So I think if there is a preference for, for a certain skill set for these at-large positions, I think it's important for it to be in the code so that it can be recruited in that way. But I think for, for our recommendation, it really is probably more of a preference than a requirement so that it wouldn't negate the two who've already applied to be considered as part of the process if we reopen and go through the process again with a little more targeted recruitment for, you know, some professionals.
We could reopen with the preference, but retain the two applicants.
Correct.
So that, I think everybody has their interest in there.
The other thing that's happened unintentionally, those two at-large four-year terms are now on a different time cycle because of the, because of the resignation.
Right.
So you've got, there's sort of twelve months or eighteen months perhaps between the two four-year cycles.
And I think, and I think if we're gonna go out again, we should probably, I'm sorry. I think if we're gonna go out again, we probably should ask all the planning commissioners if they'd like to stay.
Why?
Because some might not want to be planning commissioner. If we're gonna do it, we could do it all at one bang.
That seems reasonable. I'd be surprised, but that seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could I ask a point of clarification? Just if, if the plan was to, if, to come back with a modification to the ordinance and that ordinance would go into effect before the applicants were considered. I, just a point of clarification that I think that would take two or three months.
Okay.
Yeah, it would take some time, I mean, to go through the process. But I think this is about getting the, the pool right and figuring out if the council was interested in those positions, having these qualifications. That's the process we'd have to go through and it would take two to three months to come back with that process.
Previously with our planning commission, we sort of had this kind of a goal in mind, and Linda, we mentioned it. But we also had the additional factor, we allowed candidates from outside of the city to actually serve in the planning commission. But they had to be within our area of interest, right? So it was like Gold River and Rosemont and Mather sort of got added to the mix.
Within the, within the core pack boundary.
Exactly, yeah. Which is still our appropriate boundary, by the way.
It is.
All right. Is that adequate direction for staff? And I think we probably need some public comment in here. Is there any on this item?
There's no public comment on this item. I'm looking at Zoom and telephone and there are no hands that are raised either.
Okay, no public comment. Do you need a motion or do you just need direction on this?
Just direction, which, Mayor Sander, could I just repeat it so I have it correct? So from what I understand is the council would like staff to amend the code to require some desired qualifications for professional experience for the two at-large members. We'll do a code amendment and then we will reopen the application process. And because it would be desired, it wouldn't disqualify anybody that's already has an application in. We'll send out the application again, get some more, and then we'll bring them back to you in a few months.
Okay. We're all good on that?
Just be sure. Just, you know me, just be sure. We just want, we don't want them to go away. We just want to suspend them for a couple of months while the ordinance is rewritten.
Yeah, they, thank you, Councilmember Budge. Staff has been in contact with them and they are understanding of just kind of the delay in the process.
Good.
And we're just one clarification of just, there was a request to just check with the current planning commissioners, you know, as far as to see if they're in for their, I guess, terms or their current before as part of this process as well.
All right. Nothing else, we'll move on to item twelve point four. If the clerk could announce that subject.
Do we want a, a roll call for that or we're good with?
I think it was just direction was all those requests.
Okay, very good. All right, the next item is twelve point three. Discussion and potential, I'm sorry, next one down, twelve point four. Approval of council member appointments to regional boards, commissions, and committees.
And Stacy, looks like you have the honor of the staff report.
Yes, Stacy Lightner, City Clerk. So while I am going through an introduction, I'm gonna ask Haley to actually pull up our table of current and proposed appointments for 2023 and 2024. So each year, council members discuss and determine appointments to be able to serve on various boards, committees, and commissions. And this year, what we're presenting to you is a list of the appointments for 2023. And to the side of that on the right, we have just moved everybody over to 2024, except in one particular area where we meet periodically with the county when items need to be discussed. And that appointment has generally been the mayor and vice mayor. So we've moved those names to be Mayor Sander and Vice Mayor Pulapati. We've also gone through this table and we have eliminated or proposed eliminating a few ad hoc committees. And we have done our best to be able to update the meeting schedules based upon what we know, because not all agencies have confirmed their meeting schedules for 2024. We don't have all of those dates and times. But from what I can find from the website, what Councilmember Budge has shared with me and the, some of the clerks that I have connected with thus far, this is what we propose for 2024 as we know it today. So I thought we could go through page by page. There are approximately six pages and maybe just confirm that these are the appointments that you would like to see in 2024. And then I can contact the various agencies and confirm with them the appointments. So if we can start with page number one, which you see on the screen, I guess I'll just ask if there's any changes that you would like to propose.
David, you're the one. Do you need a break from the poop committee? Because I know Siri is looking for, I'm sorry. I meant region.
Regional sand.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Siri would like some more roles. So Regional Sands, you know, you could hand her the poop. I meant Regional Sands and that amazing, it's still a committee. Don't look at me that way.
Fine. It's very healthy for you to have that.
Thank you. All right. And I know you're busy, but we don't want to lose the fame of where you have the most influence, where it matters.
That one, yeah, that one's not on the screen, but I have no objection to giving up that role. I've just been the board chair. I don't know that I have any particular influence there that would be particularly helpful for us, unlike the other two appointments I have.
The real ones.
Which, which do have definite influence. So yeah, if there was a desire by Siri or anyone to pursue that appointment.
The one, let's go this, on this slide, like I said, so let's go this slide. I think, no changes then? Then we can go to the next slide. Okay, then let's go to the next slide. This is the one you were talking about?
Yeah, you could do the poop and the.
The Regional Sand?
Yeah, the Regional Sand.
So, yeah, Regional Sand and Sacramento Sewer District are gonna be merging into new agency this year. That's.
That'd be a great one for you to kind of get your.
There is some, really. You're killing it.
Sorry.
We'll just keep it clean.
Oh, my God, see?
There really is, there, there really is a limited number of issues that in fact, affect us really directly here. I suppose economic development question is one of them. I have started a corridor project with Regional Sand where we're using Regional Sand and Secog to sort of spear this idea that old commercial corridors need help, they need reduced fees in order to stimulate development. Regional Sand is one of the major purveyor of fees along those old corridors. Secog is sort of the organizing body for the discussion. So if I was to no longer serve there, we would need to be sure that that initiative was still kept up because I could not serve on that initiative without being the board member.
Yeah, that's a really good point, David, because if you, if you look back, this commercial corridor study began in the late nineties. And there's, there's a binder this thick where the county studied all the commercial corridors. And, and of course, nothing ever came of it. And so when we incorporated, one of the things that economic development was using was the, the fact that there were, there were two levels of fees for Regional Sand, one for greenfield and one for infill.
Right.
And economic development here pretty much used up all of the infill credits that we had. So we kind of got stuck when it, when it came to things like Target and the Fong property and the, what was supposed to be the hotel next door to the mini storage. So we really had no credits left over. So if there's a way to resurrect that idea, acknowledging that infill is a much more difficult thing to do than greenfields in the long run. I mean, greenfields cost more, but infill is much more difficult to do. And merge that so that there's a way to reduce the fees for infill development. That's a very worthwhile idea.
So I initiated that when I was past chair of Secog and we started a study. We picked up that and we did a year worth of discussion.
Yep.
This is like Folsom Boulevard is what we're talking about for our impact here, or Coloma or Sunrise.
Yeah.
These older commercial corridors. So we worked on it a year at Secog and then it sort of went a little dormant at Secog. But then when I became chair of Regional Sand and Sacramento Sewer District, I created a committee there to do the same thing and to sort of be the point, working with Secog on figuring out how do we reduce fees in those old commercial corridors. So that work has just gotten started at Regional Sand. So if I was replaced there, we could potentially lose that or we're gonna have to work diligently to, to keep it going.
So it's really probably a time issue for you. I mean, that needs to be your realistic.
Yeah, it is. And coordination with the alternates this, this particular year for me.
We can leave it. That's fine.
Okay.
It's, it's up to you.
Do you still want to be the second on that, Garrett?
I love the second on the poop committee.
I got a night call on him. Let's see. Cable, mosquito, vector, South Sacramento Habitat. All right, anything else on this page?
Nope.
All right, next.
Nothing on Lafco, library.
So maybe on, on the GSAC, you know, you have the monthly and I could be your alternate when you can attend those.
Yes, let's, I'm not sure what GSAC's rules are, but let's add an alternate.
I believe the appointment is the city manager that was delegated to the.
That was originally.
Mayor, I.
Ah, that might be.
Go back to the manager.
Well, you can do it.
Well, we could, hmm, I'd say that we just name an alternate and then function that way until we're, somebody blows a whistle.
Because you'll be there eventually, you're doing it this year.
Good idea.
I, I, I mean, I think they take either electeds or, or city managers for that role. So I think it's, it's, it's kind of fifty-fifty, I think, how the other communities do that.
I know the nameplates change in that room, yeah.
So it's kind of up to the council as far as where they want to see that.
And it's kind of an every other month. Most of them are now remote. I think one every six months is in person, something like that. So if it's remote, it actually is not necessarily a schedule problem for me. But if the, they do a retreat, that might be a schedule problem for me, for example. So let's, yeah, let's name an alternate for that.
Just, just as a reminder too, we also have Councilmember Terry that actually sits on that same board representing Sierra as a place of employment here, so.
Can we double down the votes?
So we have extra votes.
We are well represented.
Okay. Are we not doing the Sacramento?
Agency Formation Commission?
No, we only get to do that like every four or five years.
Oh, bummer, okay.
I think it's longer than that.
I think so too.
All right.
Might be every dozen years.
Lower American Conservancy when it does meet.
Yeah.
You got the college, Siri. Do you want to put a, do we need an alternative for the city Sacramento one?
No. Those two, those two are strictly the mayor, except that for the criminal justice cabinet, almost all the mayors send their chief of police. And Chief Luke and I simply attended all of them last year. So it's really between you and, between Chief Tamayo and David.
And now it's gonna be a Zoom meeting most of the time, I think.
It's always, yes. The, the four cabinet meetings are all Zoom. The in-between sort of working group is in person in the courthouse.
Okay.
Led by the, by the presiding judge.
I think the vice mayor could attend in my absence.
There you go.
Because it's a Zoom meeting.
All right, next page.
That's it.
Yep, next page. Sacramento County, Elk Grove United.
Yep, yep, yep.
So on this particular page, we are proposing that we actually remove some of our ad hoc committees because either their work is finished and they're no longer needed. And those have been crossed out.
Just so you know, we killed it on the mobile home committee.
Don't, don't we still have more gateway signs to launch?
If, if I may make one quick comment, just as we talk about that subject, I did receive a request from former councilmember Garvey, McGarvey, to help him dissolve the nonprofit that was the Sister Cities nonprofit. There was a small fund.
Yes.
If that was not the council's desire, you should bring that back. Otherwise, I think he will be proceeding with trying to get help with that.
Yeah, we've got it from Bob and we've got it from Bob Ariano because they're, the two of them are tired of having to turn in the federal nine ninety-nine or whatever it is at the end of every tax year.
So absent objection or desire to schedule that.
Siri, can you do the Gatewood, can you do the Golden State Water Company for me? Can you take that one? Okay.
That, actually, that is an interesting point, the Sister City. We have a single Sister City. It is a, there's no relationship currently. It revolved on the former mayor of Torre Alba.
I think I brought this up with the city manager a couple of times on this, on the Sister City.
So there, there is gonna be a report back on kind of the Sister City. We do have an effort that council has, has requested on some additional Sister City efforts that's happened with some of our community and business partners. And so we are working on a, some efforts there. And so I think we expect a report back specifically on Sister City in a, in a later meeting.
Do you want us to start to tell you what ideas we'd like to form or are you more just gonna say?
I think once they get the update.
Yeah, when you get the update.
All right.
I, I think, Mike, in that update, I just heard Athens, Ohio is forming not a Sister City relationship, but it's a Department of State partnership with a city in Ukraine. And quite a few different jurisdictions in the US are setting this up. It's not Sister Cities. It's something else. But you might want to add that to that presentation because we have so many Ukrainians, obviously, in Rancho Cordova. That would be a silly thing for us not to consider, in my opinion.
I agree.
Did you get that changed, Stacy, or me to Siri?
Yes.
I, I do think, as, as Mayor mentioned, there might be one gateway signage project that's still maybe underway. And so that might be one that we want to maybe uncross off for now as there is still an effort taking place.
For the city asset naming?
No, the gateway signage committee.
Oh, okay.
At the bottom.
All right, you two back on it.
Yeah. Although we were supposed to.
Are we done naming stuff?
We were supposed to, no. We were supposed to come up with lists of names to flesh out the categories.
So, so we do have categories and I think what will happen is that, you know, this is one that may be reinstituted when we have naming of assets come up again as far as. But we do, are working with the direction from the committee and the council on the naming of street names, which is.
For that poop street name.
Coming to a council meeting near you, I think that's up for discussion in January or February.
No more beaches.
Listen, the Gatewood Street is. All right, next.
Next page. We've also crossed off the nonprofit COVID-19 Recovery and Support Ad Hoc Committee. And we have three here.
we have three here with a couple of additions that you'll see at the bottom, Cordova Recreation and Park District and the Rancho Cordova Technology and Innovation Committee.
One year.
Good work, guys.
It's gonna happen. All right, good.
Any public comment on this item?
The city clerk's office does not have any public comment via email or speaker cards. I am looking at Zoom and telephone, and there are no hands that are raised.
All right, is there a motion?
I think I just want to make sure that I captured what I heard. So if we could just go over that again very quickly. For the Sacramento Area Sewer District and Regional Sand, was there confirmation, Mayor Sander, for you to stay or?
Stay, change alternate.
Okay. And will the alternate be Vice Mayor Pulapati removing Gateway?
Yes. You're the new number two.
I also heard, Haley, if you could go to page number three, I also heard for the Greater Sacramento Economic Council that we are going to propose adding an alternate of Pulapati.
Yes.
And then I also heard on at the bottom of page three for the Sacramento County Criminal Justice Cabinet that we're going to propose adding an alternate of also Vice Mayor Pulapati when the mayor can't attend.
Yep.
Okay. And on page number five, I heard for Golden State Water, we are going to remove Gateway and add Pulapati.
That's correct.
I see a trend.
I also heard that we are adding back the Gateway Signage Ad hoc Committee. And those are the changes that I heard.
That's correct.
All right, still no public comment?
Still no public comment.
I'm open to a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gateway, seconded by Budge. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gateway.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. That brings us to item 12.5. This is our 2024 City Council meeting schedule.
So Stacy Lightner, City Clerk, this is also the item in the clerk's office. Haley is going to pull up for us the proposed meeting schedule for 2024. So each year, council members discuss and determine our proposed meeting schedule based upon our research on conferences and what might be going on with the Cordova Community Council, the Chamber of Commerce, cap to cap, the National League of Cities, and so forth, to identify conflicts. And generally, our regular meetings are held on the first and third Mondays unless it falls on a holiday. Monday is a holiday and then we move that meeting to a Tuesday. We do have some additional holidays in 2024 for Juneteenth and Caesar Chavez Day. And so not all of those affect our meetings, but I just wanted to remind you of that. So we are proposing that we cancel and not have the meeting on Tuesday, January 6th. So you'll see that that is crossed out and identified in red with a proposed cancellation.
January 2nd.
Sorry, January 2nd. You'll also notice that we are proposing on April 15th that we are canceling that due to cap to cap. You'll also notice further down the page on our proposed schedule that we are proposing that we cancel a couple of our council meetings, starting with July 23rd, which would be a special meeting work session so that we can go what we refer to as dark for some time over the summer, as well as August 5th, the the regular meeting and the special meeting that we might have before that as well. And generally, each month, we have a work session on the fourth Tuesday of each month. And so this is our proposed calendar for 2024. And we will adopt a resolution to move forward with our calendar unless you see some conflicts or changes that you would like to make.
Siri, do you have any conflict?
I think this is a question for the mayor.
Oh, that, too.
I think we all can work around ours.
Yeah, my my schedule is unfortunately not predictable enough at this point. There's a lot of things that come up and invitations that come out that I can't necessarily say with any, you know, certainty what I'm doing in September, October, November.
The Jan 16th one, I know you and remember you mentioned a conflict at that time.
I think on January, yeah, I think on January 16th, for example, I'm likely going to be in Switzerland at the World Economic Forum.
And I might be at a conference at that date as well.
I'm not sure it's certain for me yet, but it's pretty likely.
So under the new rules of AB 2449, we do need to have a quorum in our council chambers. And if if individuals are going to be remote, which we can certainly post your location so that you can join the meeting remotely, the important part is that we have a quorum of at least three in our council chambers.
I'll be here.
So if we know that Councilmember Terry, Budge, and Gateway will be here and that Mayor Sander and or Pulapati will be joining remotely, we can certainly do that and post your location. Or you could choose to be absent if you're flying or what have you.
Yeah, just just confirming on that one, you need Councilmember Terry. Thanks.
Any other potential conflicts that you see for 2024?
I will just mention, we did usually our dark meeting is second meeting in July. But given the date now of the California Capitol Air Show and the potential for NLC Summer Series, we that is kind of why we shifted back the the dark day to or the dark meeting to the first meeting in August is is the potential for cancel.
That's fine. I think we're good to go.
If we can get a motion so that we can adopt our.
Move approval of the resolution.
As soon as no public comments have cropped up yet.
Good catch. No, there are no public comments for this item and there's no hands that are raised in Zoom or telephone.
Second.
Okay, motion by. Budge, second by Gateway. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gateway.
Yep.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. Item 12.6, you can read the subject, please.
Appointment of Labor Negotiators.
Move approval.
You got to ask for public comment.
Adam, do you wish to say any words of wisdom to us on this?
Sure. This is just an item that will allow the council to adjourn into closed session for a conference with labor negotiators that would be designated by this item in order to discuss city manager compensation issues. And we just request that you move the recommended appointments.
There it is.
All right, any public comment?
We do not have any public comment on this item. There's no speaker cards, there's no hands that are raised in Zoom or by telephone.
Counsel, any comments or questions? Otherwise, I'm open to a motion.
So moved.
So seconded.
So seconded.
Motion by Gateway, seconded by Pulapati. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gateway.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry is absent. Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. All right, any future agenda items? Seeing none, we kind of had one already talking about Sister Cities.
Recording in progress.
Potentially Ukrainian partnership with the State Department. If there's nothing else, we're going to go to closed session.